If you want to leave that out, I can plug it in. Hey John, how's your work coming?
I am not feeling great, so if you're looking, I'll probably take that.
Just make sure he knows what you're doing with that thing, because if you leave that... Hey John, how's your work coming?
I...
Why is the playback like that?
Because our speaker's not... We're in the meeting, so the meeting played, but that should be better now.
Good.
Okay, so we're... You can see here... You're live. Live on YouTube. Okay.
So when the...
So we'll stay live, right?
Yeah, you'll stay live. And then I'm just going to mute this right here.
...
Travis, is your guide here yet? Is your guide here yet?
He'll be on Zoom.
Okay. What's the radio man? Do you want to pull up your section? Let me see. Travis? Travis? Line section. Where you asked for the...
Yeah.
Still got a couple of them calling in, but we're tempted to start a meeting. Welcome everybody out to the town council, town Apple Valley. You can join us if you'd like, we appreciate it. Mike Lusenby. Mike Lusenby, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. One second here, buddy. One second.
I show them on here.
Oh, some more.
Okay, I got it.
It was second sign in. Everybody.
Well. Well, that...
Oh.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
Do you have more on there?
No, not yet.
All right.
But I will watch.
Good evening, everybody. Call the order, Mike, or Paul Ederson?
Here.
Are you losing me?
Marty? Here.
Dale here? Kevin?
Here.
Michael?
Uh, here.
Quick mayor's update, we've got a couple items to address. Um, first of all, we want to address, bring the county media to, or bring the council up to speed and report on last night's mayor, I mean, the mayor night. There was a committee formed to present and create and present questions to the candidates of the mayor, mayor, mayor's office. There are three, there were one candidate who excuse for vacation, one candidate, candidate did not appear, and one candidate who did appear. The committee was designed to create a neutral point of view to, so the mayor's office and the council's office would have any input on uh, creating questions for the, for the candidates generated from the general public. That committee was, was headed up by Kristen Chipman. If anybody doesn't know her and her husband, they used to live there, over here. They used to live here years ago for quite a long time and just moved back. And uh, I'd like to take a minute to, we had some little bit of disruption uh, in the, in the meeting and some challenges with it. I'd like to ask, first thank her and her committee for taking on that role and ask her to step up and give us a report of how that went.
All right. Thank you for hearing from me. Um, we were told to basically try and make this as, as professional as possible and try to keep things status quo and try to do everything we could to give the questions to the candidates that actually would pertain to Apple Valley. And so my committee and I came up with the questions for Apple Valley and last night we ended up reading them to the people so they knew what they were missing. Walter Josie, before we could even discuss the, the layout and the rules for last night, um, decided to, he asked if he could speak and when we said no, because I wanted to read the rules that were, the debate on any question should be limited to the merits of the question. Debate on, should not be about other members and especially should not involve any personal attacks. To keep the debate from becoming personal, members should address the chair instead of each other. Do not interrupt another candidate while they are speaking. You will have your speeches stopped if you are slanderous or pursuing personal attacks on anyone. Keep your speeches and responses to the topics related to Apple Valley and its future, not personal vendettas past or present. You need to, if you cannot abide by these rules, you will be escorted from the meeting. These seem very basic, they've seemed very respectful, and yet our mayoral candidate who did show up could not abide by any of these, did not give us chance to even read these so that he would understand the process under which we were trying to hold a very consciously humane meeting. And um, I, I just think that the disregard that he showed for the rest of the people who were here is very telling of neither kind of mayor he will be. Thank you.
Thank you. We did close the meeting as a public meeting and, but there were still several residents who wanted to participate even without the candidates. So it was opened up between the committee and the residents to have an open discussion forum. And I see, what, Bree, I think that was here last, or was here last night, um, that continued on. So the questions, unfortunately, didn't have an opportunity to address and submit to the candidates. So the questions were brought to the attention of the residents, allowed the residents to be able to respond and interact with the committee. And, and talk about those subjects that are pertaining to the town. I won't speak for the audience that was there, but I will speak for myself as an audience member because I did not participate outside of the audience. And I thought it was a very productive conversation, even though there were different points of views, different residential members that were there. Uh, it was a very cordial, professional uh, conversation that lasted probably a couple of hours. And a lot of residents who were here to solve problems and see problems solved and not bicker and fight had an opportunity to, to bring out some of their questions and I applaud their efforts, I applaud their spirit. I certainly applaud their, their desire to stay and try and work through some of the issues. So those of you that were here and those of you who are online that weren't here last night, I am very grateful for that. And I'm very grateful that you, that you invested into the town and invested in our issues. So we appreciate that and we'll continue on tomorrow night with the council candidates. Next item is, uh, we met last month.
Maybe you could just take a minute, explain the chat a little bit and I'll start reading those.
I, I will, okay, we'll get to it. Well, last month we addressed the issue of Mr. Campbell's project, Robert and Maria Campbell, and I see Maria in the back office here, a back room here now. I had questioned in the last meeting the validity of using the development agreement for the project. The council expressed strongly that the approval of the project was contingent upon a development agreement. Since that time, we have taken that development agreement and worked with the applicant's attorney as well as our town attorney. I have a, a letter that, that will, that will be forwarded out to you guys before the night's over from our attorney, encouraging us to understand first and foremost what a development agreement is used for. And if I'm being redundant, you already know this, I apologize if some of the public does not. When a project is approved, uh, it is done so because it meets the merits of the codes and covenants and ordinance restrictions of our town and is, and is also in unison with the health of our, of our communities. A development agreement historically is used when there are issues above and beyond a normal procedure that requires a town to, to contract with the applicant to achieve additional items such as Travis and Libby Wells, who are here tonight with one of their projects, with their project, uh, where Mayor Lusenby, working with them, uh, had worked out of terms to have the town utilize some of their property for a future retention basin that would help support some of our other residential. That's a classic example of where a development agreement needs to be entered into because it's not met at the, at the standards or ordinances and he's not required to do that. Mayor Lusenby also was fortunate to work out, uh, some improvements to Rome Way and a secondary access out to Main Street that the applicant was also not required by ordinance to do. And that's, that's how development agreements are used. Mr. Campbell's, however, um, our attorney has come back and recommended that we not move into a development agreement with the Campbell residents because if you go back and read the minutes as we did, our objective was to ensure that he would not, or they, the applicant did not have the ability to build more than 11 units on their property. And the teeth of that is actually achieved, the tool used to achieve that is actually the final plaque recording. The final plaque recording that recorded the county and prevents them from building any more than 11 units. There are those extenuating circumstances that the town, town needs to move into contract with. And the, the development agreement itself, while it doesn't happen very often, development agreements are subject to court law where a recorded final plaque is not. So if, if some, if the applicant wanted to dispute it five years from now, or the town wanted to dispute it five years from now, it's subject to dispute. That's why recordings are recorded. So, um, that will be coming up on our next agenda. If you guys can just throw it on your radar and take a little closer look at that, it'll be on next month's agenda item. The next item is, I've been asked by one or two council members and many of the public to address flyers that have gone out into the community over the last three or four weeks. Two of, one of them is from a, a council applicant or, and one is, is, uh, is not signed. And the other one is created by the fire district. The council member or councilman who is, the individual who run it for council who sent this one out is entitled to their opinion, entitled to their voice. So I'm going to reject the offer, the request to address these because it's quite frankly his prerogative or her prerogative and, and not my business. So I'm not going to do that. I've been asked to do it personally as well because I'm also a candidate. And I kind of reminded of my good old Uncle Bud when I was a kid. I, I used to love to go to his house, but the thing that I didn't like to do about his house was he had a bunch of hogs. Every time I go there, he'd make me feed the hogs. And it didn't matter what I do, no matter how I tried to get around that pen, I never came out of there not getting muddied up or bloodied up or crapped up or something, and I'm just not personally going to engage in these types of conversations. But there is one flyer that does need to be addressed, and that is the one that was sent out in behalf of the fire department that makes uh, statements of claim that, of actions that the town took against, in this particular case, against the fire department that are inaccurate. It is, I'm not here to defend the previous administration's Mayor Lusenby's or Mayor Campbell, but this one is going to, is going to be addressed. I'm going to ask that both of those individuals, um, work with our current mayor to create a response to this because I think it's in the best interest of the community to have this one addressed. So that one will be forthcoming by Mr. Lusenby and Mr. Campbell should they accept the invitation to address this in written form and we will, we will have that attributed to the community to correct those statements. Moving on, the next item is, um, this will do that. Anybody know what this is?
Meter reader.
Meter reader. This is a meter reader that Dale Harris has used to go out and drive down the communities and goes by and reads everybody's water meter. When he does so, he brings this back and turns it into the office, the office plugs it into the computer, the computer generates a water bill. For some reason, this Cedar Point and Canons Ranch or Springs, I've heard called different things, Canyon, Canyon Springs division up there, for two to three months has had some inconsistencies in this reading. For example, I spoke with Bob Pickleton, and Bob, if you're on, and I pronounced your name wrong, I apologize, Pickleton, tonight, where his meter reading, this computer says he used 60,000 gallons of water last month. He has a household of two people and two dogs. It seems excessive on the surface. The problem is, in the previous month, it also said 60,000 gallons or near, in that vicinity area that he used. But the third month back shows that he only used 24,000 gallons. So we have had some challenges with our, with this, with our meter reading program with inconsistencies and inconsistencies in our billing process. This is not something that we manually go in and review 800 and something, for, for 97 homes. We do monitor a few of them, uh, but a few of them is not enough to say that there's a problem across the board. In the auditing, we have discovered that for some reason it's limited to those areas up there. So we are working on that, we want to bring that to the attention of the community, let it know that there are some challenges with the computer system. It is not a manual problem, it is not an office staff problem, it is not a water superintendent problem. It is a data-based computer program that we're working on. We've also had in that process, a numerous amount of complaints about over-usage due to water meters. Mr. Harris, who runs our water department from the district, is very adamant that a water meter cannot be misread because it's not electronic, it simply takes a gallon of water, go through to turn the clicker, the wheel to read the gallon. There's a lot of, of truth in that, but we continue to have these problems. In one repair only, there seems to be an issue with a resident's home where there were multiple washer parts installed into the meter that appear, we don't know yet, but appear to be altering that. This was 20-year-old washer, there's nothing, uh, no improprieties there whatsoever that occurred when it was installed. We are aware of it, uh, we are correcting it, as we find that there are inconsistencies in the billing, we are auditing and we will correct until we find out what the problem is. We are working with the manufacturer of the meters as well as the manufacturer of this, they'll do that to try and see if we can figure out what that problem is. Rest assured and take confidence that we're aware of it and we're trying every way to find a resolution for that. We'll continue to work on that. So that's, that's the, the water bill on that. So that's the mayor's report. Let's move on next time. Let's move on to the next item. The next item was consideration possible action and adoption of final budget. Before we get to that, we're going to move to item number six. If there's not any objections, consideration of possible approval of the development agreement for TLW Investments LLC, approaching number AV1329D to the front. Excuse me?
Number seven, not six. On this thing, it's number seven.
Number six. It's number six on ours.
Number six is the current buyer's agreement.
Consideration of possible approval of development agreement for TLW Investments LLC. Is this the one that you use if you're in number six?
Yeah, that's. Okay.
Okay, cool.
Can you, Maria, can you do this? Your number is?
I can go with cost. Six on the online.
We're going to move forward to consideration for possible approval of development of TLW investment. The attorneys were still working through, even as late as 4:30 this afternoon, the challenge of this development agreement. If you recall, in our last meeting, it really came down to a couple of minor items. And could you, Travis and Libby Wells, or Mike, forward the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Craig Carlisle.
Yeah, so Mike Radshaw with Alliance Consulting, the applicant engineer. So I think the two items, and forgive me, I haven't been entirely working on this project entirely. So it's been, it's been, Craig Oates at our office has been working this. But my understanding is the bond issue was a concern. And the concern was acceptable, so the 125% bond.
It's not the amount, it's the instrument that we have concern with. As you're, Mike's, by the way, Mike's have been a long time engineer in this community and he'll know this as much as anybody. Performance bonds, cities are tended to move away from performance bonds because of the challenges that cities have trying to foreclose, for lack of a better word, or exercise their rights with an assurity bond or an insurance bond. So it's not called for a performance bond. Cities across the state are rapidly dropping those and moving to either cash bonds or irrevocable line of credit instruments to secure the project. And that's the challenge that our legal is having with it is that the insurance performance bond, we want to move away from. So we're looking to either utilize a cash bond or a irrevocable line of credit. It is at 125, 125% of the cost of the project. Unless it is a cash, then we would look at a 15% reduction as is the standard, as you know.
110%. So, and I assume that with this, basically, if the developer comes in and builds, constructs portions of this, that would be reduced, the bond would ultimately be reduced, would not be.
You're talking about partial release, we're not really talking about.
Well, so this is saying that you can't have a recorded final plat until you, the bond is tendered. But if they came in and had an approved set of plans, built 50% of the improvements and then the cash bond was then levied, produced based on what the remaining, the remaining items on the development.
Okay.
I mean, I'm assuming this is, this is just saying final plat.
Correct. Recording of.
Right. And so.
And yet, it is a conflict because the applicant is also asking for a two-year window, actually after a 10-year window, that if, that he can have 10 years to build out the project, which is counterproductive to him because he's got a, whatever the dollar amount, bond sitting there tied up for 10 years. He doesn't want to do that either. So he's looking at, if I complete the first 25%, the challenge that is, Mike, is that the town then doesn't have the assurity that utilities are going to be performed, are going to be developed. I think where our concern level is, is, as you well know, an applicant can build a subdivision without bond. He can do it at risk.
Correct.
He's not required to bond the subdivision itself. What we're asking you to do is to bond at minimum the off-site improvements, the improvements to the development that the public participates in. As you well know, the roadway going up the asphalt, the roadway going out to the back, ensure that those things are developed. If your client decides to build 10 lots and the market changes and you don't build out the other 15 lots for five years, 10 years, we understand that, we're not going to require you to bond that. But this goes back to the 10-year request. We're also not going to give you an open-ended, we don't want to give you an open-ended project that you can set on for 10 years without that infrastructure being built. So the infrastructure that supports the community, we would want you to bond for and develop as part of phase one. And that's what we're trying to get to.
Okay. And so let me, so let me get this clear. So the question is, on the table is, in order to move the development forward, you're looking for a performance bond or a cash bond or something?
A security tool.
And you're saying not a performance bond, not an insurance bond. Not an insurance bond, but a cash bond or a letter of credit, irrevocable letter of credit on the public infrastructure outside of the project.
Public infrastructure or public road, for example, if the street that goes through the middle of your subdivision is a roadway dedicated plat.
Right.
That we sign, accept, and we would require that to be bonded because that is owned by the town and the utility is there for the benefit of the entire community. So that streetway would be required to be bonded. Okay? So the public utility portions of the project, we can require. We cannot require you to bond the development itself. You won't do that at risk.
Well, and interesting, I don't think there's anything past the public infrastructure that is to be built other than some nominal grade.
There are three items. There are three items. The improvement to the roadway leading up to your subdivision.
That's, that would be a bondable item.
Correct.
Right.
The roadway going out to Main Street, secondary access, and the retention basin, that's your obligation to build.
The portion of the retention basin that we're obligated to build. Okay?
Which you are still working through JUC on because you're also looking at doing onsite retention for the interim, I understand that.
Correct, yeah. I mean, obviously, this is, these are large tracts of land. The actual detention required is insanely nominal for this size of a lot, so, okay?
Now, that will be resolved at the JUC before final plats are approved.
Right. Because, yeah, I don't think that we could, we're obviously not looking to build the regional detention basin for, for a lot of reasons, not just financial. So.
Sure. But I think we can continue to work through that portion of it through the JUC before we get to final plat. Move through the final plat process. But we would require at minimum bonding of those public utilities and thoroughways that we just discussed. I think Dale has some questions.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Craig Carlisle. Can I be?
This is part of the bond issue. Let's talk about, let's talk about the time. Again, you're right, we, obviously, we want to get done with this project in a timely manner. Two years is a really short time.
It's actually three years. Because you know, as well as I do, that you can go start your development without the final plat being recorded.
Correct.
The process is actually, or the clock starts ticking, not when the construction drawings are signed, not when the notice to proceed letter, because they have to begin their work. It actually begins when the final plat is recorded and you have one year to start that development and then your two years kicks in. So the reality, it's a three-year one. That's a pretty lengthy time for 25 lots, Mike.
It's, it's a lengthy time to potentially build them, but to build them and then have them for sale for the next 10 years, which is what the absorption rate of a lot like that could be, is difficult.
We're not developing it. You are.
Right.
That's your risk.
I'm agreeing, we're trying to limit our risk as much as possible.
But you also have the ability to come back in at the end of that final two years and you can also apply for extension. That's a standard procedure too. So not just bury it three years, but you're also only talking about developing. If you're planning to build out all 25 lots or half of those lots, that's your phasing, you know, that you risk that you take as a developer. And it's hard for, and I'm not speaking for all the councilmen, when I say we, I'm talking about us, but they have their own minds. It's hard for us to say, we'll use, we'll use a project that we do not hold familiar with, which is Dixie Springs down in Hurricane, below the dam. I think they received their approvals in the 60s sometime.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but that's, that's a completely different scenario.
But it's an open-ended development project that causes challenges for the town.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree that that's even kind of close to what we're about right here.
The open-ended is.
Well, we can, we can agree to disagree, but that's fine. Okay? So other questions then?
Yes, this was sent to me, so I'm just going to share it with everybody and get everybody's feedback on it to see where it goes. We went back earlier in this year, which was before my time, so you forgive me for that, but it is what it is. The old AV1329 was subdivided into a 58-acre parcel and 157-acre parcel.
I don't know.
56. 25, no.
We're talking about lots, 25.
Okay.
Two blocks, two parcels.
Two parcels.
Two parcels, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the smaller parcel was sold and became the AV1329 G. Okay? Okay. I want to understand, the state and the town have minimum rules that owners must follow when dividing property for sale, for sale purposes. If the rules are not followed, the state lightly says that the resulting parcels are invalid and need to be corrected. There is no required plot found as having been filed for the AV1329 D. If the plot was not necessarily due to plat exemption rules, there is nothing found that shows record of that exemption process being followed. There are planned collector roads showing on town engineer maps for the parcel. Missing paperwork means no required road dedication was done for the town. Also, since no plat or plat exemption paperwork is apparent, that means required water, sewer, fire approvals were ignored. The Apple Valley subdivision rules are similar to the state rules and also have not been met. I am unclear why the town would entertain applications for development on land that has not been through the town process seen in Title 11. A code that mentions misdemeanors for owners if not followed. One more, one more quick thing, we'll wait for that. Again, the state says invalid parcels. If there are, if there is an obvious reason for ignoring the statement and rules, please explain. If there is no easy explanation, maybe we should consult the attorney before.
Marty's going to take this because it was his project. Mayor Lysenby, I mean, sorry.
I'll take this one. The, all of the information you're given there is whitewashing the facts. The project had the same parcel number for two separated parcels within a public hearing describing by meets and bounds the 1329 that they're purchasing. And so that was described in all of the legal notifications as a, the northeast, west, that's many feet, all that, you know, meets and bounds kind of description identified as AV1329, which at that time, all the notes he was done, that's what the number was. And in the process, when we approved that project, that's when the transfer happened and the county then gives a new designation, AV1329G. But with all of their application paperwork and everything on our desk, I got to think that that's part of the process that can happen where they have already met all of the guidelines of transfer of ownership and we have agreed at that point, once we approved the project, based on meets and bounds. All that public note, it was all done. I think we had, didn't we have two different hearings even on it?
At least.
I think we had two hearings on it.
I did three.
Yeah. And, you know, but, but there's, you know, handful of people that want to try to throw dust on this and try and muck up the wheels of anything going on. And this is just another bail attempt to try and stop something that's already beat up to that, you know, referendum, you name it, they've gone through hell on that. And it's time to move on.
Okay. And I've got an additional portion to add to it. Thank you, I'm going to say Mayor Lysenby, the dude who did this. In addition to that, you mentioned, I tried to write down some of your reading real good class, but roadway dedication plaits and et cetera. In the final plat, those things are verified remedy before they're reported. Your, your, your legal descriptions, your roadway dedication plat is dedicated over, by law reported, et cetera, et cetera. So the process is complete. This is just addressing the development. Okay, so they're still going through their process. That's what Mike and I were just talking about, when we were talking about the final plat. A lot of that legality is still to be worked out. The retention basins, what's the obligation? The roadway dedication plat that will still have to be generated, submitted to town. Town engineers will review, approve, make sure that it is a legal document, make sure the legal boundaries, et cetera, et cetera. And then that roadway will be dedicated to the city and to the whole of the city. Okay? But we're not there yet.
Right, this is, we're in the process of actually parceling this on.
Your development started before I was here.
Creating this.
Any other, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I, we looked at something, some of this once before and I'm wondering why we still have a 20-foot wide asphalt in this. Because I know that we're requiring developers places to go 25 feet wide. What page are you on?
Page eight.
Page two. Item 4A. And I thought we'd already, you know, part of the discussion we had when I was working on the project was the road was going to be about the standards. And aside that standard was a minimum of 25, you need at least 12 feet in each lane direction to be able to load it all. And that's just we can buy. And I know there's the discussion that there isn't a road in Apple Valley that's wider than 20 feet on asphalt.
It's on page two.
And we're talking about existing compared to.
Right. It's supposed to say 25. And Travis, I don't think you guys, your attorney had any challenge with 25, I just don't know why they changed it.
Are you talking about the rum road one?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The engineer went up and looked at it and wanted to stop signs at 50 mile an hour and he said it could be a single lane road to 10 to 14 feet wide.
It's not a single lane road.
I know, but, and that's where we're still.
I was looking at that.
In my notes back from your attorney, it said 25, but it didn't end up in the agreement, right? I saw it was 25.
Craig's on.
So I think part of the, part of the concern with, I mean, obviously, Sunrise has come back and said, hey, this road is adequate for a single lane to 14. The existing road is not 20. It's existing.
It's too weak traffic.
Agreed. Right, agreed. And, and so, I, to generate a 25-foot road, you're exacting.
We're not exacting anything. We, we first started this project, and like you said, you're new to this project, is we had to address the infrastructure and said, we have issues and I don't think we're going to be able to prove that project. And one of the issues is, is that we can't afford to redo that road out there. That was one of the issues that we brought up. And so he does not have to do this, so we're not exacting anything. And if he wants to wait for us to be able to have the money to do that road, that's not a problem, we can do that. We can just put this on ice and we cannot do anything until we have the funds available to put our own 25-foot road in there. He offered to bring it up to standards in one of our meetings and said that we'll bring it up to town.
He offered to bring it up to standards in one of our meetings and said that we'll bring it up to town's standards. That was the verbiage we used at the time. And, and I, he said willingly, we will, we would like to do that. So I know you would like to call it an exaction, but what through this is, you know, the other option is, is, um, I, cause I'm okay not to, um, approve this project if that's the direction we want to go with this, because the thing that they promised us, what they would bring up to standards and we've got to think about public safety, additional traffic going on that. And, um, and they said they were willing to do that at the time.
Well, so I think that, I think that the verbiage was we're willing to, to asphalt the road. Um, and now, and then.
Town standards.
Okay.
So now let's, and then let's step back because here, well, let's step forward here. Because here, um, your town engineer is saying, hey, that road should be signed, signed at fifteen miles an hour.
As dirt.
Currently. And so if we want to keep it fifteen miles an hour, let's pave it to fifteen feet is adequate for fifteen mile an hour road. This is in his state, in his letter.
Yeah.
Then he continues and says, if you want to make it more than fifteen miles an hour, it, it will require true removal, reconfiguration of the curb and a complete redesign of that entire roadway, including your infrastructure, your water infrastructure, your drainage infrastructure. Um, I, I mean, that's exactly in my estimation, because that's a complete redo, retoll of the city infrastructure.
I, let's, let's go back up really, because I think the spirit of the bike was that we have a dangerous road. And what we were looking for at minimum and maximum was to have that roadway paved up to theirs.
Okay.
So. In working with our town engineer, a, a twenty, a twenty to twenty-five foot road is what we discussed. Because our standard is twenty-five foot. However, the current asphalt is not. Uh, so we, you, you, Travis and I, you know, we've talked about that, our engineers talked about that. Uh, so the spirit of what we're trying to do is to improve that roadway with asphalt. Not necessarily reconfigure the ditch, is not, not cut into the hillside, um, build retaining walls, not drop grades because they don't support the other roadways up there.
I think that's our spirit as well. We're, we're extremely anxious to do that.
I, I think that we can, we can both achieve what we want without going to the extent of construction by introducing the paving to what it is now or twenty-five foot maximum if it, if, if the current grade is supported. Not currently, current width.
If the current alignments and.
Correct.
Drainage and.
There's a bar ditch there that cuts you off at twenty-four feet. I, I don't think our intention was to make you go up and rework the bar ditches or cut into the hills. And I think Mike, you didn't make that, Paul and Marty and I. Girl, yeah, I was there, was, was on the side with engineer and we looked through this issue. And we concluded at that meeting that it was not necessary to widen out the roadway because it created additional problems was one of the reasons. Correct. Grade coming down off of the other street was not, would not support it. The amount of, the amount of removal of the road on the outside of the curb would actually require us, because of the height of it, would require us to go into somebody else's property and gain an, an easy right of way to cut into their properties in order to support that. So the engineers condensed or compromised approach was, was here are some speed control issues we can do. Here's some stop sign issues we can do. Let's, and we can asphalt this and make this work. And that's, that's what we're trying to achieve.
And that's what we're trying to achieve.
So I think if we can work towards that and if it, if it can support twenty-five feet of asphalt, then twenty-five feet of asphalt.
So, so Marty has, has concern and wants to put a twenty-five foot, um, statute in here. And that seems onerous for your, the reasons you mentioned.
And my suggestion was that we change the verbiage to twenty to twenty-five feet based upon the engineer's recommendations. So if it turns out that the bar ditches, the walls, et cetera, limited to twenty-three feet, twenty-two feet, twenty-four feet, we want to take it as far as we possibly can.
So can, maybe, maybe if we, you retold it and mentioned and said something to the effect that working with the city engineer to provide whatever is available, the max available.
That, that's what I think I'm saying.
But because, uh, uh, again, I'd like to provide a twenty-five foot roadway, but I don't think it's, I mean, it's not feasible for a development of twenty-five lots. To pay that kind of a.
And I'm gonna address that one because twenty-five lots doesn't have anything to do with it. And that's due to the fact that you, that you introduced two homes, five homes, ten homes, additional traffic to a hillside that's already under pressure.
So are you going to require that of the next building permit that happens on that hill?
The next building permit?
Hmm? On the next vacant lot?
You mean the next subdivision development?
No, I'm talking about the next vacant lot.
No, because I, I, the existing lots that are there are already established for the impact. But if you, your subdivision introduces additional above me on where we have, then it's creating more pressure. So I think the, the, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I think the healthy way to do it is to understand that while the engineers, you're, you're an engineer, while you're an engineer and your, your mechanical sense tells you that's a twenty-one foot, twenty-two foot road, we have a different substandard and rules and different guidelines that we need to adhere to. And our orders to say twenty-five feet. I think if we compromise and say twenty to twenty-five feet in agreement, based upon what the engineer recommendations are, I think we can both meet our obligations.
Well, I, again, I think we're, we're anxiously engaged in it. We want to do what we can, um, but to, to tear down the hill for.
I didn't say tear down the hill.
I, but, but, but that's, but I see Marty shaking his head saying, no, we've got to have twenty-five feet or nothing.
You know, the thing is, is when we go through these approval processes and make agreements with.
Sure.
People like Travis and, and the community, because we have residents live here. Residents are affected by that. And we're up here saying that they're gonna bring it up to standard. And now we're saying, oh, well, we're gonna be close to standards. I mean, twenty feet is not even a standard and it's not even legal for us to sign this agreement anyway, because it's below standard. And so even if we have twenty feet in there, we'd have to go in and change our ordinance. This has the twenty feet.
That's not true. That's what the development agreements do. They, they create a, the ability to.
I, uh, I'll, uh, agree to disagree for a second. But it's, we still have a commitment to the residents that we promised that we're going to, uh, have a road that's up to standard. And when we met up there, it looked like, if, based on our conversation when we were up there, that we'd be able to meet that standard. Based on initial, um, information. I don't also, if we don't want to get just in the developer agreement itself, item H under four.
Well, let's, let's not go back before we finish this one, okay? Let's, let's go back to this and and I, I guess what I'm hearing, Mike, is, is that we're asking for twenty-five feet of asphalt. Are you willing to do twenty-five feet without any additional construction if it's, if it can, if it can be built to that?
Yes. I, yes, we're absolutely willing to do twenty-five feet where, where.
I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for these guys, but I'm not asking you to go in and reconstruct the road.
Right. I, I don't.
And I'm basing that on, we had our engineer redo the roadway. To reconstruct the roadway would be problematic for the other roadways.
Right.
And it's recommended that we don't do that. So how do we meet our standard of twenty-five feet without causing that destruction? So we're asking you to commit to the maximum amount of asphalt that that road can yield and if it could go up to twenty-five feet. If our engineer.
I think the minimum should be twenty-four where we have twelve foot wide lanes.
Right now, you're about twenty-three and a half, Marty, is about where you're currently.
So, yes, we're, we're absolutely willing to, to take twenty-five feet, um, to as, as far as, and as, as much as we can. Um. But I, I hesitate saying we're gonna build a twenty-five feet foot road on your own way, no matter what it takes.
Okay. I, I wasn't, Marty maybe, or somebody else maybe, but I'm not asking you to go to that point. I'm, I'm asking put the maximum width of asphalt.
I'm, we're happy to do that.
Let me make, let me be clear too. I'm not asking them to do this. I'm just saying that, that that's what my understanding was based on the negotiations, that that's what they were willing to do. That's what we promised the community at the time. And to back off on that today is going back on what we told them and then going back on what they told us. And I, I, you know, no, we're all doing this in a meeting. We didn't, we weren't out there taking measures in these areas. You know, so we don't know all the facts at that time, but if all this is gonna get checked out the window and we have a fourteen foot wide, wide road in some places, you know, that's far cry from what we had agreed on upfront. And maybe we all just need to, you know, throw some ice water on this and just say, maybe we made a mistake in giving the improvement project subject to the agreement, because we can't meet the, what we've agreed to. And if we can't meet what we agreed to, we could all be friends and walk away and, and, you know, wait till the town has the money to do that. That's an option.
And that's not my position. I disagree with that entirely. We approved the project. We're trying to work out the semantics and challenges of the roadway. It has nothing to do with abandoning and blowing up everything. That's my exaggerational point, okay?
Well, and I think, I think.
I, I think if you read the engineer, when I, engineer report, when I visit with a region report, he felt like we could get to twenty-five feet up there.
That's my understanding at the time.
Twenty-five foot.
Well, can I say something there? Cause I was there too.
Yeah.
With all due respect, I do not remember a thing. We were gonna come in and improve the whole town or the roads. You know, we, we said we would pave the road, what you have there. So if your road is twenty feet, we're gonna pave twenty feet. If it's twenty-five, we'll pave twenty-five. But we have never said that we were gonna bring your roads up to standards.
I, I appreciate, uh, your feedback on that. Like we had in the public hearings, and we have plenty of them, was that the road is too narrow, it's too dangerous. And it was said that if we would have to have it front of the standards and of course, with the increase in traffic, why wouldn't we expect that anyway?
Well, you had your engineers go out there and they, they did the report with ten to fourteen feet.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get really this here, so it's getting out of hand here. Engineer's report, if you read it carefully, if you sit down, Mike, if you sit as with, with Mark and Russ, um, the standard of twenty-five foot is met up there currently. It's the question of the asphalt that we're, we're addressing here. We're not, we're not, again, asking to reconstruct the roadway.
Well, I'm.
The, the field study that Russ performed suggested twenty-five feet of asphalt should probably be met up there. Uh, the radius would support as asphalt, a, a fifteen foot, I mean, a twenty mile an hour speed zone. And then there's additional signage for stoppage on the other, other roadways. So, so I think if we, if we're beating this up where it doesn't need to be, uh, we're asking you to go to twenty-five foot. That's our standard. And if we find out that gee golly wish, or if we go nugget buried up underneath the ground there that will keep us from going twenty-five foot, then we'll, we'll revisit it through the J C because that, that's our standard for it to be. We're asking you to go to asphalt only between twenty, twenty-five foot as the engineers identify. That's my recommendation.
I think that's reasonable. Twenty to twenty-five feet, if we can, if we can agree on twenty, twenty to twenty-five feet. Um, I, as, because the engineers did say, hey, there is some options. We have some work to do. Um, those are.
Option and problem road.
Yeah, is, we, we don't have that, uh, information from the engineers.
No, it's in your package.
Yeah, it's there. We, I, I've ordered it out there.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the package.
There, there are. There is no way that we are trying to advocate that we build a lesser road or lessen the standards of our road to not meet our standards. But, but at the same time, and I want the public to, to listen to this, because this is, this is my personal opinion. This is not this council speaking this. It is not the responsibility of this applicant to solve the problems of the twenty-five year old town that built substandard roads. It is their responsibility, however, to work with the town and help, and the town work with the applicant to find a way to compromise and achieve that as we go along each step of the way. And that's exactly what Marty did or Mayor Elizabeth did when he was the mayor. He achieved that. This document takes us backwards to twenty foot. We're not advocating construction. We're advocating twenty-five feet as our standard. If we find out that the roadway was built substandard and can't support twenty-five feet, the, the cost of reconstructing that road is not the issue. The engineers, the engineers, engineers' suggestion or direction is that you not go in there and rebuild that roadway because it would have peripheral effects on the other roadways that don't meet grade as well. So this is not the town not achieving its standards. We're not compromising our standards. We have a grade issue with a subpar road that exists for twenty years, twenty-five years, however old this town is, that may not be repairable to today's standards as a result of that bridge line. In today's standards, guys, Marty, he knows well as I do, that road would never have been approved, period. Now, to, to fix it may not be fixable. I, I, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. So I want the engineer to make the decision and not us. Our standard is twenty-five feet. If the two engineers can demonstrate that twenty-four feet is all that's buildable up there, uh, I'm, I'm willing to give a little bit of latitude because of the existing twenty-five, thirty-year-old roadway that was substandard when built. That's my position. Okay. The, the, the next item was the ten, the twenty, the ten year. And I've talked to the applicant about this.
So you wanted to change it to twenty-five feet on there is what you're saying?
Wanted to be say twenty to twenty-five feet based upon the engineer's recommendations and approvals. If there is no, very, very clear, if there is no problem with that roadway, we want all of our twenty-five feet plus half an inch. I mean, we want every bit of asphalt that we can get out of the roadway. That's what we need as a town. And as the mayor said, it is not incumbent on the town to, uh, accommodate your subdivisions. It's not incumbent upon these residents to, to accommodate your subdivision. It is your responsibility, uh, to, to fix that, that, that problem.
So, and I, I, I appreciate those, what, those statements. And I think that is an accurate way to say it. Because we are, first of all, we as engineers aren't interested in going in and creating a substandard product. That's not our goal, obviously. We're not, we're not advocating that. That's not what we want to accomplish.
I've seen some approveds.
Yeah, I know. They're fantastic. But, but I, I also think that to your point, um, that road wouldn't have been approved today. And now to go correct it, now you're taking properties out of, to, to correct it to a, a, a perfect road, I'll put it that way, would create undue problems to the surrounding areas, which I don't think this, the town, the town or the neighbors are interested in. Or could, or could even abide by because of the grades coming in, the intersections and for all the reasons. So twenty to twenty-five feet, um, working with the, with the city engineer to.
Based on the engineer's recommendations.
I, I think that's, that's.
If our engineer signs off at twenty-three point five or twenty-four point five or twenty-five foot, that we, we want, we're gonna rely on the engineer to determine.
Makes sense.
What's safe for our community. I recognize that there is a thirty-year-old problem.
Right.
Okay. Ten-year issue, are you good with this?
I'm gonna probably twenty. I'll, I'll pave whatever's ready to pave, you know?
Right. Okay.
The ten-year and two-year note?
Yeah.
I'm two years.
Okay.
Well, particularly with the extension. I mean, you come back and, and.
Well, it was asked by a community member and I apologize, I remember who, who asked me. They asked me, well, what, why is it, is a town required to give a one-year extension? If the applicant comes back and files for a one-year extension, as required, so. You wanna answer that question?
Do I want to?
Yeah. No?
No, I don't want to answer that. I'm not, I, I think it's the town's.
It is, it is up to the town's prerogative, but it is a standard operational procedure that every town does. I, I've probably only done five or six in my life of extensions. I've never been denied. So I don't see, I don't see why the town, the town would have to have a particular reason, a pretty solid reason to deny the application, the applicants desire to extend that.
Well, if, if progress is happening, I don't think the town's gonna deny.
The, the question.
And the danger is, is depending on, I don't know.
The question was posed as one of the, the new mayor, the new council members don't like us, like the project, are they gonna run it? That was the purpose of the question, you know? And that, and it's, and, and everybody has, every group has the ability to exercise what is right and wrong. So, but I just want to point out that is, it is a typical standard operational procedure.
And I agree with that. It is.
Okay. Marty had some more questions.
Yeah, I know. Item four H. I'm not sure why we have to have that in here at all.
Consistent with recommendations section of some of our engineers, forty, like moving the local install or reimbursement town for its installation. Our posted statement is signed with fifteen dollars per hour with stop sign installed in their, their second roadway. sign that they'd be lost per hour or stop sign installed in their, their second roadway. The recommendations section of sunrise engineers, the developer will install or reimburse the town.
It's the last sentence of the course of Charleston there. I'm not sure what the ten to fourteen feet is indicating.
They tend to remove the road width at ten to fourteen feet in this area.
I'm not sure if it was dragging. This juniper that comes in, there's a, there's a runway that they're talking about, the width.
Because at the, I, I can address this issue. It's juniper that goes up the hill, right?
Yeah.
So, and juniper currently does not, is not even twenty foot, it's around fifteen foot. And I wasn't real clear, that they weren't real clear that, that what that width was because there's no survey, we have no record of the width of the road. When you pull our record, it shows fifty foot.
Right.
But in reality, it's around sixteen foot.
Well.
Plus or minus.
What this is saying, a maintain a minimum road width of ten to fourteen in this area could include grown, I just think that.
They could be specified.
Cause you better specify.
Clean that up.
What we're talking about, if it's, if that's juniper, that's not their problem.
Well, it is their problem, that's not true, it is.
Well, what I'm saying is, I don't expect them to go and pay juniper and wipe it.
No, I understand.
I just wanna make sure.
Let's adjust that.
Ten to fourteen is referring to juniper or server, not, not the wrong. Does that make sense?
I think so.
And I didn't understand, I didn't understand, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. And what's your next one? You have three.
Thanks.
Kevin? Mike?
I'm good.
Paul?
Good.
Um, I'm, I know you don't want another month or two this.
We've been four months.
I'm sorry.
We've been four months.
I, I would like to send this back over to Dayton and Dayton Hall and your attorney and president. Craig's, what was Craig's last name?
Carla.
Carla. And let him make these minor changes and resubmit it to us. I think they can do that in a couple of days, get that back to us, and we can get that reviewed. When is our next scheduled meeting?
Tomorrow.
So are the, are these, are, is there enough questions left on the table to do, to hold it, hold it out, or what you're, what you're feeding?
Um, I did, there were some questions about whether or not, because there, the packet was, was not available to, posted yesterday, Mr. Hall was, was okay with us, I mean, our attorney was okay with us moving forward with the, with the development agreement. In light of the two or three changes, if we decided to take action on it, it would have to be contingent of those things being corrected at our satisfaction, satisfaction.
Should we take action on this, those that we posted by six o'clock last time? And this didn't get put in the pack until today. So we wouldn't, wouldn't completely be able to take any action on this tonight because it wasn't posted in the package last time.
Well, it is as soon as time we can just turn back and do this.
Okay, this is Mark. It's the day after you get it back.
I would like to have those answers on that wrote there, I just, I'm sorry, I don't have a problem.
I, I don't have a problem calling, we've got a couple of other, I don't wanna call special meetings just for one item, but our next scheduled meeting is what date?
Well, it's second date, it's twenty. Today's the twenty, twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Yeah, we're on with dates.
The eighteen of August.
Yeah, Paul. I just wanna reference the date. Who's with me on this?
Second or third?
Third, third.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
That's almost four weeks away.
It's three weeks.
It's very recent.
Yeah, but we're.
I'm, I'm, you know, we're doing meetings once a month because we don't have a lot of things on the agenda, but as things can decrease on the agenda, we're, we'll eventually go back to, to two meetings a month. I myself don't have a problem with calling special meetings, we have a couple of items we've been addressed, and not waste your time with just one meeting, so I'm not opposed to having another meeting the following week. And get, get, so that we don't have to wait a month.
I agree.
Anybody else oppose that?
No.
Okay, so if what we're saying is, is that I'd like to send this back to the attorney, have these things corrected with your, with your attorney and our attorney, we'll call a special session week after next, so you might wait another month.
I have one question though, before we do. So in the termination, it does say that this agreement is, it can be terminated in two years from the time of the agreement.
And that is supposed to, supposed to say time of recording of, of the final.
Well, but, but what it actually says is, it says that it, the agreement is agreed that the parties heretofore, in the event that the final plat for the property has not been recorded within two years, then it can be terminated.
Correct.
So.
Which one I have is it?
So this is, this is nine M. And so that's basically saying, if, if we don't, we're working due diligence, and if we don't record a final plat in two years from the time of, an arbitrary time, which I'm assuming is the recording of this document, then it can be terminated. That, that's, that's what that language says.
It is, but the development agreement, you know, isn't typically recorded until it's recorded with a final plat.
Uh, no.
It shouldn't be.
Well, we record, we record the development agreement with, with the ordinance, typically. Typically, we record it with the ordinance, with the approval.
Okay.
So that's concerning because basically we could be, we could be working on the project in due diligence, but not wanting to record the final plat because we don't wanna put up the, all of the bond money. Not, not saying that it's not useful.
I understand that.
And maybe it's not a final plat, maybe it's something, construction documents, maybe it's a preliminary plat, maybe it's just process.
Well, I think it adds back for, for us, I think it adds back to the construction drawing.
Sure.
We, we signed and issued construction, signed the construction drawings and issued the will serve letter. The will serve letter is typically has an expiration time, so.
Agreed, yeah, construction documents typically have a one-year expiration.
So I, I think if we, I think if we tie it to the construction drawings, signs of construction drawings and the, and the notice, and the, the notice receipt letter, then we can set that at two years at that point. So.
And that makes sense. I, I think that makes sense. Because, you know, we, we would ultimately be working toward a construction, set of construction documents. Once those were done, we would go to work, and then sometime down the road, when it made sense, we would record a final plat. Now, with that, less than two years, I fully expect it is, but that does tie our hands to be able to come up with a bond and all the, all the facilities in that two-year time range.
We want your hands tied.
I know you do.
So, so let's set it then at two years from the signs of the construction drawings and will serve letter. If you don't decide, if you decide not to record your plat.
Right.
Then that's your risk, and we're not, we're wanting to take on that risk.
And I think that's reasonable.
We're not in development agreement.
Okay. So at least progress is being done, construction drawings are being managed and accepted or whatever.
You guys okay with that, Mike?
Yeah.
Let me clean that up, and your attorney should have it within two days at most, and then we'll call a special session next week. And we got a couple of other, we take care of two and get that thing, push that to the bottom. Okay? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mike, for coming up. Okay, back to item number one, consideration, consideration of possible action on adoption of the final budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Marty, would you like to take this?
What's public hearing, sorry?
Didn't I say it was a public hearing? I said it was a public hearing earlier. So we're gonna open up the public hearing this time?
There's a lot of people have a lot to say about.
No, did you open the public hearing?
Yeah, I just did.
No, okay, I didn't hear everybody go yet.
We're opening up.
Oh. Did you just open the public hearing?
I'm opening up the public hearing at this point.
Yeah, are, are you?
If you could come forward, please.
Oh.
Cause we don't know who you are.
Margaret Osowski.
If you, I'm sorry, you might, the microphone and camera, so the, people on Zoom couldn't see you too.
One or two for West Little Pinion, Margaret Osowski. I just wanna know, on, on the new budget, I'm not really good with budgets and figures and stuff, but I'd like to know, are, are, do you got any plans to work on our, our dirt roads? Cause they're so bad.
Yes and yes. We're working through it right now, a new, an updated master transportation plan.
Well, no, I mean, like, like, maybe some type two on it or something, so we don't have so much dust.
Type two won't control the dust.
Well, control what we have, but it's just total dust.
Well, if you notice, we were out last week and we went out and bladed and watered in the roadways about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago.
No, you're lucky, you're lucky we've had rain.
Well, yeah, we're lucky we have rain, absolutely, but we don't have the budget to, to maintain gravel roads on a weekly or daily basis, but for sure, you understand that.
Yeah, I understand that.
You notice we went out about a week and a half and go and bladed roadways again, we're gonna try to do that every three to five weeks.
Yeah, but we've never had, since I've lived here, we've never had any kind of maintenance, you know, like new, new road base, nothing on those roads ever.
Well, they, they didn't put more stuff down there when they did the game.
Nine eleven.
Just saying. Okay, Kevin, if you say so.
A lot stayed improved, Mike, we did put some dirt out there.
We did, we did have some scheduled dispatch Friday to do improvements to this road where the bottom of the hill where the, where the water collects. We were working with the U Doc group that's working on the highway that here, we had an agreement to do some trade out for some, some gravel and road base put in there. They pulled it on Friday at the last minute, said we're just not gonna be able to do it, so we, we had to vacate that. We are maintaining it a more regular basis now, and we are trying to come up with a budget to actually, to see what asphalt's gonna look like from the next, next ten, twelve to eighteen months, get those roads asphalted.
All right, well, I just, you know, I'm tired of living on that dust road. It's, it's, it's just horrible.
And you've, you've been vocal about that in the past, about I don't have any reservations about having taxes increase or whatever it takes to get asphalt roads.
Exactly. I'm not saying asphalt, I, I just said an improvement. It could be asphalt, it could be road base, just something, cause we're just on total dirt.
Yep, pretty close, pretty close. We do have some material out back out here. We are, we have some challenges, we're getting that out that we're working through right now.
Cause I even, I've even called, you know, a company to put down, you know, try to put down some kind of, you know, oh, what is that, the stuff that they?
Like magnesium chloride.
Right, and, and because we don't have any, you know, any road base, they said it's, it's not worth the time or the money to do it. So, all righty.
See, uh, I just forgot the name of the asphalt company, give us a quote on there right now. Yes, ma'am?
Um, do I need to?
Yeah, I apologize, we're, the people on screen can't see you.
That's okay. My name is London, I live on Purple Sage Road, and so when the storm hit, the people that were building houses out there were using this one lot that's next door to me, and so they made like a little driveway, I guess. Well, when the rain hit, it washed into the road, and so now the road is got some damage, and who's responsible for that? You had said yesterday.
The builder created it.
Okay.
Well, they're building the ditch.
No, they just, they built like a little thing and just kept going with the big equipment back and forth.
So the, the bar ditch on the side, they flapped it down.
Right.
So they could pass through it, and I, I'm aware of it, that we did it, and they're gonna repair it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Buskey?
And if not, me and Richard will come over, there are shovels, die right there, but we'll get her done.
I'll take care of you. Rich Osowski, ten twenty-four, Little Pinion Way. On the roads, when Moja put that in, I talked interstate. Actually, interstate dumped more rocks in front of our house, but we paid for it. They put the worst road base they could find, it was nothing but junk, it was nothing. And when they did all the construction with pipelines and the water lines, that ruined it, and then the interback come through and that did, finished it up. Those ditches that some of the contractors dig out there for homes, they are extremely deep. That's not the problem.
And vertigor.
And, yeah. What the problem is, in front of Murphy's house and a few others that have been dug that way, and she mentioned it to me, is that the road is getting washed out because the water's coming directly off the mountain. And we had a mild rain. If we would've had Springdale's rain, if we would've had Cedar City's rain.
Colorado City.
Or Colorado City, and it's coming. There's no doubt about it, we're still in the monsoon season. It's gonna do a lot of damage, and at least the ditch will take care of the flood, although it won't go anywhere because it's blocked at both ends, cause those people don't do anything with them, and I understand the problem of the homeowner to take care of the ditches, which I dug mine by hand.
Will I come do my?
I can't, I need the exercise, I'm, I'm out there shoveling, I don't have a problem with it. I just met with the doctor and I'm in top age shape. Woo! So anyway, I can handle the pressure.
Mars, quiet.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna eat the dust for a while, and I tell people that. I just told some homeowners next to you that are gonna build with the backhoe sitting there.
I met her a couple of weeks ago.
I seen you over there, I do watch, you know?
Me too, I stopped seeing who she was, what was she doing?
Yeah, and I talked to her after you did. She did ask about the roads. My opinion, don't, in your lifetime, don't figure anything happen, and that's how I feel about it. It's been there twelve years, they're just deteriorating more and more, so just let it deteriorate. But when we get that monsoon season, and hopefully, it may happen this, this next month, the other thing, we're done with the roads, cause we gave up on those, and I told her to give up on them, and a few other people, cause I do talk to a lot of people that come by.
Well, we haven't given up one, fair.
Yeah, I know. The other thing is dust. I'll just change the subject a little bit and get out of gooseberry. Those people that's doing that RV park, I watched them yesterday, I had breakfast, not breakfast, but I was at the mailbox, and there's so much dust, they're working on that RV park, and, and I don't think it makes a difference, but they don't even have a permit, did I understand?
Okay, Richard. I love you, man, but the public hearing is supposed to be about the budget.
Okay, let's move right on to the budget. Let's move on to some money.
And I am working with those guys, they wanted those guys from the record.
Yeah, well, hopefully the RV park will do something. If you go to administration on your budget, I believe it's eight four.
What's the number?
Eight four.
Yeah, the number, though.
Uh, let's go to, just out of curiosity, let's go to number, uh, three twenty. Administration, Intermodal Professional Fees. The line before that was eighty thousand, then it dropped to twenty thousand. Can you explain the sixty thousand dollar drop, or, I'm just out of curiosity.
Marty, you think this?
I circled that as well.
Pardon?
I circled that as well.
Yeah.
Problem. They were saying, I will. Give me your question, would you have?
Change to what?
Yeah, one thousand.
Yeah, under.
I, I have one, bring up the house, I just wanna make sure.
John, are you on? Yeah, I know you are.
Yeah, can you hear me over?
Yeah, so this is what's interesting, is.
John, while he's looking that up, he's looking at my questions.
Anyway, I.
Is playing a drop, John? Explain that drop, John?
He's talking about, let's see here.
He muted?
I am not muted.
John, can you hear us?
I think yours.
Yeah, I hear you, John.
We're here, John.
Yeah, he's, he's not muted, so. Can you hear us, John?
John?
He knows, he's trying to figure it out.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Were you able to figure that out, John? I'll call him, get him on speaker.
I think you gotta put the green, green on him, on zoom. If you're in.
See where it's highlighted?
Yeah, through the highlight.
Move it over to John.
The, uh, system does it by itself.
Does it? Oh, oh.
Yeah. Based on their style, yeah.
I don't understand it.
Right, um, anyway, I'll, um, is that, do you have anything else, um?
Yeah, I did, the one directly below it, we went from fifty-five thousand, and that line there is, uh, three thirty, fifty-five thousand to twenty-eight thousand. I'm not asking you to spend more money, I'm just asking you what happened.
I thought you were giving more money.
Well, we can do that.
Well, with the.
No, no, we can't.
A couple of things that we look at, um. You're real careful.
Yeah, sure.
Um, a couple of things to look at too, in the column to the left, um, the, uh, twenty-six, one forty-six is what our actual was last year.
Yeah.
And the other number is the one for that. And, um, so fifty-five in the proposed budget is, uh, really a number I've circled that says that one's the wrong one, not, not the one you're pointing out.
No.
That, that fifty-five shouldn't be fifty-five, it should be less, because this is, this column to the left, over the twenty-eight thousand's fifty-five thousand, that is proposed budget, and we already know, if you look at the next column over, that was the actual we did last year.
Okay.
And so why have it fifty-five when the actual number was twenty-six, one forty-six?
So we're with budget for fifty-five, but you spent twenty-eight?
No, no, I'm going to say that the proposed budget is fifty-five.
Yeah.
I don't have the number, um, there, one column's missing here, but I think we should be including, which is what was our actual budget? This column is the proposed budget, so these are edited numbers that are being proposed to change it to, which, to be honest with you.
Was that not worth? Give a call?
Grand solid. Um, and I, I have a problem with all of them, so. Anyway, so that one really, the twenty-eight really matches probably what.
That's the actual version.
Well, yeah, the twenty-six, one forty-six was our actual last year, and so the twenty-eight probably.
Okay. The other thing is, uh, we go to page five, and I pretty well know what this is. Under Highways and Public Improvements, which is eight twenty, and eight ten and eight twenty. Uh, one is principal, one is interest, so that's on the gateway.
Where are you at?
Do you see the time?
I'm on page five, and the number is eight ten.
Six PM.
At the bottom.
Yeah, forty-two, twenty to eight ten, bottom.
Okay, eight ten, was that on the Gateway Project, the forty-one thousand was on principal, and the interest on that Gateway Project is thirty-five thousand is interest. Okay, and anywhere on the improvements and stuff, have you allotted any money for road repair? We're talking road repair, like the, the cracks and, uh, Cedar Point. This asphalt that is deteriorating, it's over the life limit of the asphalt out here. And also, is there any money allotted for any of the gravel roads?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there we go, we can hear him now, right?
Gone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you hear him now?
We can, yeah.
Okay, now they're not fighting the speaker.
Yes.
What is the account number?
Uh, we're looking at forty-two, twenty, eight ten at the moment.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, what is the account number?
Forty-two, twenty, eight ten. It's feeding back again, it's all. I turned that volume up.
Turn it up?
Down. Remember how we turn the volume down, back to you?
Why it's not? Yeah, he, he has backbeat, just he's, he needs to turn his speakers off. John?
Yeah.
Or John will be able to hear us, though.
You can hear us, right?
Do you have, here, all on speaker?
Go to just backbeat. Let's just, first just pull that volume back down, that's where the battery is.
Lowing down?
Yeah.
Gets down.
Turns off.
He's the one that's doing the backbeat.
John, we lost you, didn't we?
No, I can hear you, you just can't hear me.
John, we lost you.
No, I can hear you, you just can't hear me.
Hey, can you hear us now, John?
Yes.
Yes.
We can hear him now, forty-two, twenty, eight ten. You looking at that, John?
That's verified, John. Yeah.
Yes, fire contingency.
Okay. So, Richard, to answer that question, there's, um, extra funds that we've transferred a bunch out to the DUCO project, and the other one is, if you look on the bottom of the forty-four fifteen, says public worst contingency.
Yeah.
Um, there's forty thousand dollars, I don't know if that qualifies as care factor or not, but, um, I haven't read the stipulations of what we can do with the, uh, the word money that we got coming in. Basically, in this packet, we get a hundred thousand dollars.
It's, I don't think, it's not close, we're looking at five lines there, everything we save is repeated. Turn the volume down.
I'm not, I'm not on the view, but, uh, I'm curious, on whether it's on, on the, uh, on where it says view, there's an arrow. Yeah, okay. You have listed there, same as meeting, same speaker, same system, close watch speaker. That's part of the problem. The same HDMI two splitter. Should I go to Realtek speakers and no meeting speakers? It should be the, uh, can do, can they offer? Does it help?
No, go back to.
Anyway, uh, can you get that, four down, go in, probably get it to see if there's no capital burden project that we have here, that says here that fifty thousand dollars of this thing, we, you know, we're very. So should I turn on?
So there is someone said, I, what I say that if we have.
There's plenty outside, but we have allocated.
Okay, if we have a flood, and the road gets washed out in certain areas, that's money you could use for an emergency case?
It is, if you follow the procurement process.
Yeah.
You, you, the, the mayor would have to go back in and, and ask the city council, uh, for approval, just your, your responsibility.
For an emergency type situation, if a road, shh, road gets flooded out.
Yeah.
Okay, understood. Just a point of interest, everybody got their taxes, or at least I got my taxes. When you looked at your taxes, mine went up two hundred and twenty-eight dollars on the house, and then, uh, I get two hundred dollars on the lot. But if you look farther down the line, you'll see Apple Valley's portion of that went down. Everybody else's taxes went up, school went up, library, everything went up. But look at Apple Valley's portion, that portion, we get less. It isn't a whole bunch, but when you're talking like me, eight dollars, it went down from last year, and then you multiply it times everybody in Apple Valley, that eight dollars will add into a lot of money Apple Valley lost on this last increase of the taxes, and cleaning lots. All the lots went down too, for the portion going to Apple Valley, but everything else went up. So that's just interesting to see why Apple Valley is getting less money now than they did last year, and although my taxes.
Your taxes went up.
My taxes went up.
Okay.
I see exactly how mine went down, Richard.
I just, I can semi, semi, I can semi-explain it, I bet he can explain it really well.
The, uh, taxes, uh, for Apple Valley should have been the same, first of all.
Yeah.
Because we didn't do a tax increase. Other municipalities or, you know, uh, county, you know, insurgency district schools, they do regular increases.
Exactly.
And that's why theirs went up, and our state about the same, because unless we do the public noticing and say we're going to increase our percentage, our amount stays the same every single year. Now, your value might change, they might say, hey, your house is worth a hundred thousand more money, but how much Apple Valley gets is the same until we do a tax increase.
But it isn't the same, it just went down, I'm just curious why it would go down.
Why eight dollars, but.
Yeah, and then out of curiosity, who actually, uh, put this budget together? John put the budget together. Thanks.
Is anybody online, have any public comments, I assume nobody else here does? Anybody online with comments? No more in the audience, we will close the public hearing at this point. And move to line item number one, consideration possible action of adoption of the final budget for the fiscal year two thousand.
You mean item three? Discussion action item now, or you need to know?
Did, did we, uh?
Consideration possible action of adoption of final budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two?
Yeah, no, consideration possible action is, right, verging, it's a public hearing for the budget. Under discussion action, it has a three.
Right, discussion possible action of budget adoption for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, item number three.
Yes.
Yes, well, I still have a few questions on the, the budget too, so, yeah, that's where they have discussion of budget right now.
Fire away. So on page three, when we look at. Sorry. We're going to get this.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
There we go.
That's way better.
We look at.
Good job.
Here to help.
Other inter, interdepartmental charges.
Yep.
We went from four thousand, and on the paperwork we had a couple of weeks ago, that was on the end of year estimated, was, uh, was actually exact, exactuated at four thousand nine ninety-four cents. Now it's up to ten grand, what, what did we spend money on to raise that to ten grand before end of year?
I believe we spent money, John.
Which, which is why I'm. Because we're showing ten grand, it's thirty-four.
Sixty-four, sixteen.
Thirty-four, sixteen. So we're quite an increase on the interdepartmental charges. Um, I mean, if we're going by prior year, or not even prior year, but year-to-date actual is four thousand nine ninety-nine, uh, estimated on the last one we had a couple of weeks ago said just a little over that same amount. Now that's increased to ten grand for kind of year estimated, and of course, we have to.
I can explain that.
For the final budget.
I can explain that, Mike. Um, at the time, we, uh, had an agreement with the SSD to do their books. Um, there was an agreement on how much per month they were going to be charged. Um, this four oh nine nine that you see in the column to the left, without that, that number is what we actually charged them for the whole year.
Okay.
And what they should have been charged for the whole year is probably closer to twenty-five, thirty thousand. But we didn't charge them everything, because they didn't have the money to charge them. And, um, so that's why, uh, I don't know, the ten grand is in there, it's a nominal number, it's, uh, I'm, I don't even know why it says ten grand in the estimate, because obviously it's more than.
It should be that in the estimate.
Yeah, and they just carried that ten grand over, over them, over these numbers.
All right, so, well, now we all address that.
That's all been absorbed.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's been absorbed.
Yeah, so I don't know if the other question got answered on, uh, page four. That one, that, uh, forty-one, forty-one, uh, three twenty, where we were showing eighty thousand, but then for next year, we're only showing twenty thousand, aren't we underestimating that one?
Well, eighty thousand, John, if you want to.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that one, so, um, likely those engineering fees are tied to a specific project. And so rather than putting them as just general administration engineering fees, what we'll do is, uh, when those specific projects come, then we'll tie it to, uh, a special projects account and expense it out of there, and, and then that doesn't give the public, your parents, the eighty thousand is being spent just on, you know, general engineering, does that make sense?
Happens when we have our agreements and so forth.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean specifically, let's say that there's another, uh, uh, big, large road project that we get a grant for. Rather than coding the engineering to just general administration engineering, what we'll do is code it to that specific project, and then twenty thousand is the estimate for how much will happen, um, that is just general, uh, engineering.
Gotcha, understand.
And that, that amount of money on that, by the way, is the impact you study, and we did some, uh, in, uh, letting.
Studies on that, on that, yeah.
And those were all one thing.
Right, yeah, I remember that, okay. And then I don't think, let's see.
The other question wasn't answered, so Mike, back on, uh, uh, roadway improvements you asked about earlier, where did I see that?
Well, right.
I thought I heard you say the last question.
I think somebody else asked a question, I'm trying to answer it. Because we stuck to thirty, we, we did that.
Thirty-five thousand.
That thirty-five thousand, or forty thousand, we're deciding, yeah. I'm trying to help to answer that one, so I'm good, I think that was my question.
And I'm not sure everybody got the explanation, the, the part of here, because those people were talking, Marty was talking, the, the thirty-five thousand dollars is allocated. Will, is money, Richard asked, it's Osowski asking questions, I couldn't, it can be, but it, it, if you follow the procedure, we have to come back to the town, have to come back to the council and ask them for the, a release of those funds if you transfer it out. Right, so they set there, this was part of the conversation we had last month, we had the hundred thousand dollars collected together, and thinking we would do the same thing, so we're both at a party, just, it is somewhat allocated to different categories, including fire and streets, all of you have it?
Okay, so, um, I, uh, I've kind of been going over this, and I'll, uh, start off my thing, let's say I made the motion to, uh, approve the amended budget in our last meeting, and, uh, it was such a long, um, motion, it's even hard for me to remember every little item. And so when we, um, when we go work on this again, you know, I'm like, what was it I said again? And I know a few of the things, and I'm going to point out a few things here. Uh, I have a real problem with transparency and not having our YouTube videos updated on website. This takes away my ability to go back and watch the meetings and say, what the hell did I say again? And they're still not there, I complained about it, and they're still not there. The other thing is, is I have to ask for, um, accurate, um, at the end of the, first off, my wife asked for a written grant request June fifteenth for the, um, the specific operational budget and for the, uh, general ledger, um, for last fiscal year. And then, uh, it didn't come, so she, you know, put the best plan in my head, and so I needed to, because the, uh, down council, I need to ask for that, and I did, and your members honor and, like, first, when I did that.
Yes.
I got a phone call right away, that, um, within a day, it raised, I can't remember exactly, but, and I was told that we're going to have the, uh, reconciliation done, like on Monday, this was hitting Thursday, Friday, and on Monday, we're going to do reconciliation, which I didn't, you know, done Sunday, anyway. Um, and then I sent out another email a couple of weeks ago, complaining that I haven't got it, and I still don't have it today. So I'm supposed to vote on our budget, but I have no idea from what the actual numbers are from last year that I can compare to our budget, and have what I feel are, because I feel like there's a lot of inaccuracies in the budget and accuracies, and I can't look at anything, I can't go through and verify where. And I can't look at anything. I can't go through and verify where, where are the problems because I have not have the ability to do that. And the other part of this is. I think in this whole process, John pretty much has been the lone ranger on some of the stuff. We've had a couple of budget meetings, but what was discussed in the budget meeting has not carried over into the budget. And we still have all these problematic issues here. I know in the motion, we talked about right about the hundred thousand dollar contingency money. I didn't really understand why you didn't have the contingency money. And now I see with a hundred thousand dollars coming in from our, you know, state of Utah or the, but even federal government that, you know, that money's already till, so it's people on the way anyway.
And what's that for?
Cares that kind of stuff, you know, where federal, federal money. I don't know what it's earmarked for. I don't know what's.
Yeah, I was looking at this.
Basically, we got what the hell is this? We get ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred, I mean, it's right at a hundred grand where you can get from them. So that's, you know, that, so I'm okay with the contingency, but we asked about Joe's suggested run basis. And we provide that up into the two threes and put it in each category, fire, administration, and roads. And so we did that, except that if you add up what those allocations are, and you've got thirty-five and thirty-five and forty. That doesn't equal a grant. And so those numbers are wrong in this budget as well. And so we've got a hundred and ten thousand allocated for contingency money when we've got a hundred thousand coming in on contingency money.
John, can we move some other money around here, though?
And then there are some other things that were moved around to make the balance out, but. Anyway, it's, you know, I feel like, I don't, firstly, I'm, you know, an abstained vote on this tonight until we. I'd like to get the financials. I'd like to have what I asked for a month ago. This, I've had John walk in the office before and it takes him like four, five minutes and here it is. This is not a hard ask.
Well, overall, we look for that too as well. So that's our mic problem.
Mike told me yesterday and says, hey, by the way, did you ever get that? Because I thought that that would be, you know, sent out to everybody because you, you know, sent it to everybody. And, and we still don't have it. And the other thing that's disturbing to me is that we don't have on this agenda or in the past four months or three months, whatever it's been since, since March, we still don't have a consent agenda. You know, the town council's supposed to see what we wrote checks on and approvals in every meeting, and it's still not in here. And so I'm being asked to sign up on a budget that I don't even know is accurate because I don't, can't get the information. And we don't have the consent agenda for the last seventeen months, even though the checks are being written for. And are they duly more approved that they've been written?
Well, I'll address the consent in the portion of we haven't previously paid months either, every consent.
Oh, yeah, we have in March. We have in March.
Every single month.
We have not because I've had a hard time, where we have, the, the consent agenda is a couple of different things. Where we've spread out what we've done on checkbook without a problem. And we've had those consent agendas. And it's one of the things that, yes, we did, John and I were at odds with. Where I've asked for one every single month. Sometimes we got it, sometimes we didn't. Because, you know, while he was deployed and we don't have the checkbook reconciled or, you know, there's, there's different moments when there were reasons why we may not have the budget and the numbers that give you the percentage, you know, so you know how much of your budget you've spent. And it's, I've spent too much time asking that. John will tell you. We've asked for that, but it took a while for John to get his feet under him on some of these issues, but that's no excuse that we get deep going on that path. And just the fact that we're, we're supposed to have our feet under us right now as far as the budget goes and far as John helped out, where's the consent agenda?
Okay, you guys want to see consent just every month?
Every, it's required. That's the little thing that we vote on, those checks that we're writing every single month.
I guess my only question is, how come we didn't have the previous eight months when I was?
You can go back to the meetings and you'll see, even in March, there was one in there. And I've asked for them all, all the time. I didn't always get one because of some reason.
Well, it was when the shelves were here, we were getting. Let's make sure it's every single month.
Yeah.
That'd be nice for the last three, about three months.
Maybe we can. Since April on, we need to get a consent agenda. And this is why I think that having a special meeting for Travis is not gonna be a problem. We need to get all that information so we have a chance to look at it. We need to get this corrected so that hundred thousand dollars is balanced right in here. And, and then we need, we can't wait another month.
John, can you hear?
This budget.
Yeah, I can hear.
John, can?
Yeah.
I'd ask you, if we were only a hundred thousand dollars, didn't, I thought we had moved some additional monies over, so it grew. Is that not true? Or is that true?
Your question's coming in a little bit muffled. Sorry. One more time.
The, the hundred thousand dollar we're talking about, it's actually a hundred and ten, I think it is. Yeah, a hundred ten thousand dollars. Didn't we move some more money to only increase that number?
No, I think, I, I think Councilmember Lisbon's right. It's just a, a little math there. And, and along with everything else, he said, I tried to incorporate everything that I caught from the meeting. I went back and looked at the video, but if there's things missing or it's not the way that you want it, then I think you just work through those issues one at a time. I don't make any like claims that everything is perfect. This is a process that requires a lot of people's input.
Good. Let's get that updated then. Let's get the last three months, Jeff, over to the council member, but in, well.
There's four months, April, April.
Since April, then.
Four months. Let's make sure we get that done by Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay, what else?
Um, I'm just curious if we have.
We need to do that, yeah.
Well, let's stay on this for a second, but, you know, there's other. You know, minor issues, that, you know, that's the biggest ones, I think, on that. The. The other one is, you know, if you want to talk about, I have four at the same times, it's a whole, same document.
Sure.
There's a host of issues and problems right up the top. I feel like that there's been no attention given on why are we even doing that? You know, we're, we're statutorily, we can't spend. That isn't allocated as such. So fire department can't just go out and write a check for new fire truck because they feel like it. Because it's not budgeted. And, you know, we can't just go and, you know, pay gooseberry because we want to because the money's not allocated. We don't have.
We don't have to allocate.
It's not allocated in our budgets. You can't overspend. And so we have categories where some of that overspending has happened. Now, reality is, it probably didn't happen. It just got put in the wrong spot because we had untrained personnel doing it. Yeah, we're training Michelle how to do accounts payables. And so what account she puts it in, I mean, if you look in there, you're gonna find this phone bill in one month might be under the one category, the next month is put under a different category. You know, it's the same thing.
The trash was.
You know, and so you, you have these wrong accounts being used. And that's why this budget's been such a challenge to put together. And.
That's why I started just standing here.
But my point is, is that to, our goal that we had a couple of different, three different budget meetings I can think of, where we talked about that because we're at the end of the year, we know what we got. We know what we took in. We know what we spent. Those numbers should just fall over into that proposed budget. Instead, we have revenue, you know, for example, under fire, we have ten thousand dollar grant. Well, we didn't get a grant. Why put ten thousand dollars in revenues in a proposed budget? We know we did not get it. We know we didn't get it. Why put it over there to mess up with our bottom line? That says that we have all this income coming in that didn't come in. It should just transfer from actual over to the proposed and we pass it. And what's so hard about that? And in all the meetings, my wife and I attended and talked about, we parked on that. And it's still, if you look at it, there's hardly a line not touched here. There's a lot of blue marks on this from my pen.
So should that just be zeroed out because it doesn't?
Some of them need to be zeroed out because we have revenue in there that we know it's not getting in, so it should be zero. We know it's not gonna be here. It's not coming in. So if we're gonna amend the budget, you're amending the budget really to what we know is real life on the ground that happened. And this is still wrong. And it isn't, it doesn't matter at this point? Probably not. Because, you know, you could just say, well, the auditor will help us fix it in the end. But that's not how we should be doing business anyway. We should have a budget that's passed in motion and at the auditor's office that matches what happened, when the auditor then comes in and says, hey, I need to audit it. He's gonna look at what's at the auditor's office, what's in our books. Wow. I mean, give or take a few bucks, it's the same. And that's what, that's where it's going with us. Yeah, exactly. And, you know, so at this point, it's a train wreck. When you look at how off the numbers are, and some of them are even in the revenue column. And this is revenue we know is not coming in. I didn't put a paper, get all the tech later to it, but talk about, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of revenue that will never come up, that will never come in. That now factors into the bottom line, which affects how much balance fund transfer that we do.
Into the next year.
Right, because we're saying we're gonna do a balance fund transfer. You know, we may not have all that money because we're using the money that didn't come in to decide on how, what that balance transfer is.
Really screwing up the year before we even start.
And, and I.
I think there's some, some things are being said that are slightly incorrect, but.
I'm sorry, John, can you repeat that?
I, I think that we need to, I think what Councilmember Lisbon talked about here is just a, another opinion about how to do it as well, which is fine. I mean, and a lot of what he's saying, I think, is a good aim. But let's, let's talk about a few things. First of all, the actual column is your actual numbers, right? And your budget adjustment is what your, is the amount that you can do. It's the left and right lateral limits for the budget officer, right? And in terms of your fund balance, your, every year, your general fund is going to balance and the difference is gonna go into an unassigned fund balance. So if you have revenues and excess of expenditures, whatever that amount is, will be in your unassigned fund balance. So just because you budget a transfer to your unassigned fund balance of one million dollars, that doesn't mean that's gonna happen. So I think that's a little bit of a mischaracterization on, on that topic, but. I, I think what.
I'll agree with what you're getting at is.
There's another way of doing it, and that's fine. And maybe even what you're suggesting is a better way of doing it. But I certainly wouldn't call it a train wreck or any of the other characterizations that you've thrown out there.
Okay, John, can you, I mean, I know you, you and Marty and Tish and Jeff to some degree spent a ton of hours last month prepping this up. And it was my understanding, our last meeting, we had it balanced all the way out except for the hundred thousand dollars. Did we make additional changes other than a hundred thousand dollars from our last meeting?
I think.
I'm asking, I'm asking John a question. Hang on. Could you hear what I said?
Yes, I think Councilmember Lisbon pointed out a few of them. And I went through my notes and just made those changes. I remember exactly what they were.
Okay.
So. Had to do with transfers. If you go down to at, at the very bottom, all the forty-eight, seven, forty-eight oh seven, forty-eight oh nine, forty-eight, ten, all those transfers. Councilmember Lisbon suggested that we make it clear where those transfers are coming from, which I thought was a really good suggestion. For example, some of the revenue that came in was for flood mitigation. Some of those, those fees that are collected for flood mitigation, that should be really clear that that came in. And rather than just going into the blank unassigned fund balance, then that should be pulled aside so that money's available when you go do a flood mitigation project. So those changes right there, those accounts, forty-eight oh seven through forty-eight, twelve, were added since the last meeting.
Okay, but they're accurate now, is what you're telling us.
They're, they're more in line with what was suggested last meeting. I, it's, it's your, it's your budget or process. So I don't know if there's a right answer, but this is more in line with what was asked for last time.
One other item, maybe a good answer to, John, on this that helped me understand is when you go to the actuals. We printed out this actual, you know, a couple of different times, and the actuals really are the same. And so now we're past the fiscal year end. Why are the actuals the same and not updated with what the actuals are? In other words, you've wrote checks in the month of June. Why aren't those reflected in these actuals? Seems like that should be a moving target until June thirtieth or, you know, until all the bills are paid before June, whatever that is.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's, that's a good point. So typically, toward the end of the year, even sometimes throughout the year, cities will open up the budget and say, okay, let's make adjustments based on what's actually happening. And it's not uncommon that toward the end of the year, then they, when they estimate how the year's gonna end, then they do a budget adjustment. Now, because the year, the fiscal year twenty-one is already over, then this budget adjustment, I don't know that's really gonna do a lot of good, other than just kind of serve as a record. And so to go through and update all those actual columns between, you know, the, the four days or less of the year, I didn't do that. We could do that if you'd like.
That's what I've been trying to do for the last three months was get the budget adjusted with, that the auditor's office has that lines it more with the actuals on the expenses mostly. The, the revenues aren't as important in that particular case, but on the expenses, you know, we have category items that were, you know, probably a hundred, two hundred percent over what the budget said. And I don't know what the budget says because the budget that we actually projected is not even on a printout at all.
Sure.
We have an actual proposed, which is a number we've messed with.
Yeah, the columns that you're looking at, we, it's really easy. In fact, I can put my screen in a chair with you if you'd like. We do track all the, all the columns that you're talking about, like what was last year's budget, what was the budget before. However, the columns that you're looking at are prescribed in state code on how we'll present this. It says you'll present it with these headings. And so that information is available. And if you'd like it, I'm happy to, to share it and forward it out to council. I could see why that would be useful.
That's the printout that I've been asking for is, I'd like to see the percentages and what the budget was to know where we're at. So when we're adjusting that twenty-twenty-one budget for the auditor's office purposes, it has no purpose for us. It's not gonna change anything here other than when the auditor comes, you know, hidden verdict shows, shows up, they're gonna pull, what do we have on file with the auditor's office? What are the actuals? I just don't want those numbers to be two and three hundred percent over what we were budgeted for and we get written up over that. And I think when we're talking about, you know.
I think we can dive into this.
Federal government.
Again, so on revenues, Utah code says it's completely okay to take in more revenues than you budget for. On expenses, those individual line accounts, it's okay to go over those line accounts. Or as long as you don't go over the entire department, the budget officer has that discretion. And then as a council, you have the discretion of moving funds from one department throughout the year to another department in terms of expenses. So my estimate is that when the auditors come and they'll look at it and say, okay, if you went over budget on revenues, that's not a problem. We see there's a few accounts that went over, but you were under on other accounts and overall in the department, then you stayed within the budget. And so that's not a problem either. So my, under, from what I can tell, I don't think you have any problem. The auditor's not gonna have a problem. The state auditor's not gonna have a problem. I don't, I don't have, yeah.
Well, and I want to add to that because that's the same explanation Marty, you gave me back in the spring was, is that, you know, let him play with this up in here and it don't affect the bottom line down here. And that's, that's, that's precisely what John is saying. Is that, is that we can go up and down in the individual category, which is what, if I understand what John has done.
But we're trying to pass a budget without the information. That's, I've been trying to get this through a month.
Well, and we need that information so we can see if there's something red flagging. We're spending money where we don't need to be. If we're spending money or we don't need to be spending money, then that's why the council's here for is to look at that and say, why are we spending this much money there?
Sure.
I don't care if the state allows us to go over or under or whatever. We need as a council to be able to look at what's being spent and what's being paid out. And so that we can understand why the budget's worth that.
And Mayor, I can, I can elaborate on that too, if you'd like.
Please.
So again, Councilmember Lysenby is pointing out, I think, some, some kinks in the operations. How, you know, we provided the council a month ago with actuals. And then Councilmember Lysenby reached out and said, hey, look, I need updated numbers, which is very reasonable. And then he's also pointing out that there is monthly statements that should be coming to the council. Your, your check registry and your financial updates. That's all true and I think that that's a valid concern and we should work on that. But the, the only other input I have on that is just that when you have a change of personnel, it is a lot of, of learning. It's, the, the learning curve is extremely steep. So the manner in which you work out those kinks, I think is important. If you come in and say, you know, this is all trash, this is garbage, why haven't I got this already? And, and that's the attitude, then it can create a, a really unpleasant environment there for your staff. However, if you say, look, this is an expectation that we have and then you work toward it, then I think that the expectations that Councilmember Lysenby is pointing out are not unreasonable.
Well, thank you. Okay. We have a deadline too, we have to meet for this, John.
Thirty. Two days.
So state law requires it approved by the end of last month. We missed that deadline. When Councilmember Lysenby reached out, state auditor, they said, you know, we don't, really don't flag it as a problem until you, until the end of July. So I think that at the end of July, if you go past that, they'll probably send you a warning, say, look, we're, you were putting your, you're under a, a warning status. And then probably 30 days after that, they withhold funds until they get approved.
Okay. So Mr. Lysenby has expressed, and I think Mike has agreed verbal, that you guys don't want to take any action on this. Do you want to take and pass our 20, our 30 day deadline?
Well, it's just a slap on the wrist, uh, one to get everybody on the log or there will be repercussions when it's, we're okay.
I don't think we need to wait that long. We just need to get these printouts done, they can take 10 minutes.
And we can all go over it.
We can have a couple of days.
Can we just do it next week and we meet?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. If we get, but we need to get them out to you now.
Right.
John, can you get the, Jeff, can you get the left? And the register sheet? John, does that something you and Jeff could?
I'm happy to help, you just let me know.
Thank you, we'll get them out by Tuesday then latest. Okay. If that's the case, then we probably just take a look at. So items three and four, discussion of possible action budget adjustment for fiscal year 21. I'm going to interpret that and if we would prefer to table both of those items.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to table?
I assume.
Can you make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to table those.
Those what? Lines? Three or four?
Three, four. Second.
Vote with Paul?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, proposal for Jeff Moran to be appointed and sworn in as a town recorder. We've already appointed, we just need to swear him in. Do you have that, Dr. Fish?
We have a number here.
We don't have a number in town at all?
We have, the show we got a favor, but we, the swearing in, by the way, doesn't have to be a public meeting, it just has to be done and has to be known as, you know, the resolution.
Does anybody have objections to, to, to swear to it?
No.
Mike?
Oh.
Okay.
It's just, it's.
Item number seven, this is my friend, number seven, this is resolution adoption of the budget for fiscal 21. So I make a motion, we table that, I have a second.
Second.
Vote with Paul?
Aye.
Marty?
We're tabling the resolution now?
Yep.
Okay. All right, just do the next thing.
Yeah. Vote with you.
Yeah.
Aye.
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 I was behind you, Paul.
Can you report recommendations, announcements?
None here. Oh, we have one. And, and maybe Kevin, just question you two. We had requested that the fire department be on the agenda for this meeting and I did, I see it got taken off. Was there a reason why it got taken off?
I didn't get the request.
Had the fire department talked to you or anything or?
Kevin does the agenda, I didn't get the request. Somebody asked me that this morning, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I sent the request during the last meeting, last meeting, I was asked to present that request for them to have time in the meeting.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if that needs to be put back on.
It should be.
You know, the agenda for them.
So, yes, okay.
And maybe the mayor.
Well, the request was made, let me, let me answer to what I was told. I received an email request from fire department to be on the agenda, but it didn't track it.
Okay.
So I don't know if we're talking about the same thing.
I don't know if we are either. It then came to me and asked me to, to put on the agenda and it just wasn't there, so I'm just asking about that. I don't know what they want to go over in the agenda, just they want to-
I got a formal request. So maybe it's a different thing, so let me just be clear. I got a formal request from Blackhawk Walters to go on the agenda to discuss, to discuss alternative ways to buy a fire truck. That's what the agenda was and then he reproved it in the question.
Okay, so.
Maybe saying-
Maybe, maybe they come back and request at a time. I'm just wanting to bring it up so it's public, so we know that it had been covered, so they don't feel like they've been left out, so we cover that, so.
One other item that might be-
Not at all.
To the forefront is the minutes. I was hoping that our attorney will be here tonight to help me and help us, but we have minutes posted for the last two meetings. And it is against the code of the state of Utah to post those minutes until they are voted on by the council. And they are posted, it's not a bad thing that we do that, but it has to have a draft watermark that says these are draft minutes. And we have the minutes posted, they do not say draft on them and and they're, and if we have the minutes done, why aren't they on our agendas or permit? We're supposed to be doing that.
That is correct, they were not supposed to go on it.
And they're still there, I sent an email a week ago and they're still there. So, anyway.
You didn't send the email to me?
Yeah, send it to everybody.
Which email?
You guys will get it. I set it up to you, that'll help.
Was it the last week?
I don't really check on it.
It was last week?
Yeah, it was last week.
Paul, Jeff, they're not on location.
And by the way, it is also in the code that the audio or in this case, our YouTube videos have to be posted within three days of the meeting. And so we're out of compliance on that, because the last three months are not there for any of the meetings. I think maybe there's a funny mission.
And while, and while we're on that, I'm just getting a lot of feedback and a lot of systems that we've just become non-consistent in our consistent times that we're supposed to be having our meetings. We seem to be fairly scattered all over the place. A lot of times people don't know when to, when to show up and when not to show up. So I know we have a regular set schedule for our council meetings and everybody else, but it seems like we've gotten way off track on that. So I'm just bringing it up to everybody's-
Mostly due budgetary, I, we, we postpone though, two days due budgetary.
I think holidays.
Holidays.
And two to avoid.
Yeah.
No. And what was that?
And two to avoid.
Oh, two to avoid.
So I've just been getting a lot of feedback, those systems, they, they just seem like every week they, it gets changed or moved and nobody can mark their calendars. And usually know we're usually consistent.
Then we should start taking a look at possibly going to two meetings a month. I don't think we're there yet, but I think we should start looking at it, start considering it.
I would, I would recommend that we certainly look at things more consistently.
Well, greater pattern, how many flexibility at least they have, they have extra remaining, I think that's reachable.
Right.
And so we should still have our normal one on the 18th again, so, but that's, that's mine if you want to.
Okay.
Anyway.
Any other reports or recommendations or announcements?
Well, I do have a question real quick, what this is.
This is the explanation of our goal to the $99,000 you're getting over item number-
What does that have to do with coronavirus? So let's just rewind.
We have to recognize that the municipalities and cities are affected by this.
Negative. So it's just a-
By COVID.
It's just a, here you go, here's our name, there's no attachments, there's no-
Two $49,000.
Mayor, would you like me to?
Yes, I would.
So-
Yes, I would.
The requirements are similar to, to the last coronavirus relief, money that the town of Apple Valley received. However, they're slightly expanded. It's, it's pretty similar. The only logical difference I could see right away was that it also allows for utility expansions, for expansions in water services and things of that nature. So I will forward out a little article to, to the mayor and he can disseminate it. But it's similar to the coronavirus relief. It's got to be for COVID, but the requirements for what that means is expanded.
John, when you say expanded, I, I, when I read some of it, it, I thought it was more limited to repairs and replacement parts, et cetera, but I didn't read where you, you could expand water systems.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding is that you can use it to expand water systems. You can also use it for broadband expansions, you can use it for basically anything that helps the town handle COVID. And so I'll send out more details on that. I would think similar, but expanded.
Marty's back there thinking the dust is causing the COVID and if we could do that.
Well, before we get above the desk, I got one last announcement. And this, I don't know if this is Marty's term or Robert's term, or maybe it would be before, y'all got the term. The towers that are, radio towers are built out of the hill by the water tanks. I think one's channel four, one's channel five, and there was a, one time a, a internet service there and one or two phone services that you did, including AT&amp;T. We have been approached by the owners of that to see if we have any interest in taking that over or willing to donate it to the town. I've done the research on it, about all I can find is about $200 a month in income. It is also, the ground is not owned by the tower company, they lease it from the, from the landowner, but the landowner is dedicated to be willing to take a look at transferring that over to us. I've had Dayton Hall looking into the liability to take it over versus the income, limited income that it currently generates. The income we grow as we grow, but right now it's only about $200 a month. Does anybody know any history on that?
I think the other component in that is it has to do with our fire reuse.
It does, it does.
And so that's why taking it over just for the sake of the fire really makes sense to do it.
It has emergency there too, yeah.
And Travis Holman is the one that owns that, so it's hard to nail hand down what that might be worth, but.
I met with Travis today and told him we're not interested in acquisition of the ground, but because it is a public service site and offers public emergency services, the condemnation process is relatively simple and quick to go through. I explained that to Travis and said, there's really not anything you could do to, to interfere with that. We could take it should we wanted, so it makes practical sense for me that you should just sign it over. He was not totally opposed to that. He's going to check with his two boys that are part of that corporation and report back some time next couple of days.
What is it, five on the story, Dayton, maybe?
I think it's a little bigger than that, it's about eight to nine feet or three feet. But he deeds it over to us, it's, it gives us the ability to protect our fire emergency signals, is what it does. It's really not an income thing for us, $200 is $200, but.
Yay.
But, but it's, it's the, it's the, the fact that we control the ground for our fire.
That would be a good idea. That would be a good idea.
We, we have been approached by a company out of Arizona to bring extend additional internet services to our area. That would also put us in a position to offer that, offer those towers in there, so we could potentially increase that income. Okay? So I'll continue moving forward on that and investigate with, with the, with the attorney and see if we can put something together there. They're not asking for any compensation, they're willing to do struggle to us. Okay? We will talk about it publicly, yeah. Let's move to public comments. Question? One by one, two by two?
Again, I'm Linda and I live on Purple Sage Road. I still do. I know that the Zoom, you had talked about maybe getting it easier to get on. And I know that somebody tried all day today to get onto the meeting and I know she tried yesterday also and she cannot get on and she is a resident here. And because I see so few of people, is it hard to get on and is it, have you had problems with it?
Yesterday, we had three people act, try to access it. And we had two that accessed it within five seconds and one took two hours, took an hour and still could not get on, couldn't do it.
Could have to do with the speed of their connection on their cell.
That's what I was told today by Tom Newson who owns TKS. I asked Tom for his opinion on it, he said it's most likely on their end and not on our end. As a comment, it's fairly consistent and fairly common that we have access trouble now. I'd say a comment, I, three was all, three or four right here is, is probably enough for him. That was the only explanation I've been able to get so far is-
She, she's in Vegas, so I would think that their internet is probably pretty good and she has not been able to get on.
Unless she's from her cell phone, because I used to do a lot of new meetings for work and when you're on your cell phone, the, you're not always connected to the wifi, so she's at a hotel, whatever, but if you're on your cell service, the Zoom quality is not the same, it's way different. And maybe try doing from a laptop in wherever she is connected to wifi.
Oh, that's true.
In the meantime, Jeff, could you reach out to our provider, show them if you can figure out an area of text board?
Okay, thank you.
Woods Caski from-
Yes, yes.
Name?
Margaret Osasky, 102 for West Little Canyon. I'm sure you guys talked about it and we really couldn't hear, but you guys skipped over, I believe, number six and it was the possible discussion and possible action on ratification of ARPA coronavirus relief agreement. And so I'm just kind of curious, what is it? Because I see it's $100,000, we're close to $100,000. So is it just free money from the government or what is it? And, and I heard you saying, you know, where it's going to, the water line and some of us might have a little-
In fact, I'm going to give you a copy of it.
I think I, I, well, let me see, that's the same thing I downloaded, I didn't know this.
Take that with you.
Yeah, because we didn't know what it was and, and that's why we stayed and you guys kind of-
We have an arrow primer, it's what we can spend it on. In other words, it is free money, it's still related in there.
And John's going to deal with this with a list of things we can do with it as well.
But it does stay in there and that's what I was clarifying with John. I read it, I didn't read, I didn't interpret it that we could use it for expansion or construction water systems. John seems to think that it can, so we'll, we'll get a clarification on determining whether we can.
All right, well, yeah, we were just kind of wondering, because we were sitting there waiting and, and I know you guys started talking about it, but you kind of skipped over it and I think the agendas were screwy anyways.
John, you have something?
I, I just have the broad categories, Mayor, if you want them, I just sent them out or I can read them out loud if you'd like, either way.
Go ahead and read this, make sure we know.
Support for public expenditure, for example, funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts and medical expenses.
John, you guys hear him back there?
No.
Can you come forward?
And actually, when you're, when you're trying to listen to it on Zoom, it's really hard to hear everybody, including you, Mr. Beddoes. You've got a lot of voice like me. I vocalize, I work around seniors all my life.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So this is a summary, not, not all the details, obviously, but support for public health expenditures relating to COVID nineteen mitigation efforts. Address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. Replace lost public sector revenue. Provide premium pay for essential workers. Invest water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, making necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and to expand access to broadband internet. So that's the general require, general outline. So it is, it's pretty broad.
It is, that's a lot more loose than the last tranche of funding we got. And that amazed me, I'm going to have to say that that, I'm going to have to go thank over the provider.
Within these overall categories, recipients have broad flexibility to decide how best to use the funding to meet the needs of their communities.
Okay. And you emailed that out?
I have with a link, with, with a link that will provide you with a place to get more information.
Okay. Okay, just vote for close the public comment section. Let it do that.
I'd like to request that closed session.
Request the closed section?
For the discussion of the competency character of employee. I think so.
Hey, we're going to close it.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I think everybody got it.
Little boys are in here.